Welcome to the July 7th Blue Springs City Council Meeting. If you will stand with me, Councilmember Rowan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can be seated. Thank you, Councilmember Rowan. Now I'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is confirmation of a quorum.
Councilmember Kayler.
Present.
Tholen.
Present.
Brummel.
Present.
Erickson.
Present.
Councilmember Emmetson is absent. Councilmember Rowan?
Present.
Mayor Levisay?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Brummel.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
All right. Next item is what most of you are here in the room for. We have, again, a room full of champions. So council, if you will join me down front here. And if I could get the Blue Springs South Jaguar Varsity Baseball Team to join me up front here as well. We're gonna start with you guys. You got a lot of hits in them. Just go stand up front, face the audience here. You guys can let them look at you. So the Blue Springs South Jaguar Varsity Baseball Team is because they were the state champions. So give them a round of applause for Oliver Augler. Because of that, the City Council wanted to recognize all of your hard work. And so we have a proclamation here. I'm gonna read some of this here for you. Whereas, Blue Springs South Jaguar Varsity Baseball Team will be honored today as state champions at the Blue Springs City Council Meeting. And whereas the Blue Springs Jaguar Varsity Baseball Team made a comeback twice, first defeating Parkway South seven to four in the state semifinal game, and then in the state title game, they scored eight runs in the fifth inning to defeat Staley Falcons for a thrilling eight to six win to become the Missouri State High School Activities Association Classics Baseball State Champions. Very good. You guys did a great job. Whereas the team is led by Coach Ben Bayer, along with a team of talented assistant coaches. You guys are just here as talented assistant coaches. I hope that's okay. And this is the first time, and Blue Springs South Jaguar Baseball Team has won the state championship. This is the fourth time they have made the state final four, finishing third and twice in second place. Now therefore, I, Chris Levisay, Mayor of Blue Springs, and the Blue Springs City Council do hereby proclaim today, July 7th, 2025, as Blue Springs South Jaguar Baseball Team Day. Congratulations, and congratulations.
Words to say. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for taking some time this evening to recognize this group of young men. It's a special group. The season that they had this year, coming back from games constantly, tells you a little bit about who they are. They did it all season. It is a special group, and real proud of them, for sure. The members of the team would also like to present you with a signed baseball certificate.
Thank you very much.
That may be worth something one day. Because, guys, you never know what's gonna happen. So thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Let's give another round of applause. You guys can be seated. Thank you for being here today. Appreciate it. Because both of the people who are recognizers were south, and as a former Jaguar myself, I got to lean into the blue. Oh, hey, we're taking a picture, guys. Get back up here. That's why I have people helping me out here. See? Doesn't matter. You need some help.
I'm not as tall as you guys.
All right. Everyone ready? All right. Three, two, one.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
It'll go with the office. Proud of you. Well, we're not done yet. We are not only a state, but a national champion here in the room. Mr. Garrett Flack, can you come on up here as well? So I've known Garrett on some level for a few years now, because he's an old youth corps guy as well, and I was volunteer there. And so Garrett has achieved something pretty amazing. So I'm gonna read the proclamation and let that speak for you here. Whereas Garrett Flack is the 2025 Congressional Debate National Speech and Debate Association Tournament Champion, will be honored today at the Blue Springs City Council Meeting. He's been a member of Speech and Debate Team for four years, winning many tournaments throughout those years. And I think I heard you're the most decorated Speech and Debate student in the history of the Blue Springs South. That's probably in here if I keep reading. Whereas Garrett is the first Blue Springs South High School Speech and Debate National Champion, winning the crown at the 2025 National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament in Des Moines, Iowa, and is the first national champion in the school's history. Whereas Garrett was a Congressional Debate finalist three years in a row, placing second in the nation last year, 2024, and fourteenth in 2023. He competed for the first national title in Iowa State Capitol Building, and won the national title and was elected as President of the Senate for the second consecutive year. And whereas his coach, by Blue Springs South Debate Coach John Mark, I'm guessing John, there you are, two diamond coach recognized by National Speech and Debate Association for your excellence as well. And whereas Garrett will attend Washington University in St. Louis in the fall, plans to major in Political Science and Law School, I think it fits right in up here, and pretends to pursue a career in law and politics. Now therefore, Chris Levisay, Mayor of Blue Springs, and the Blue Springs City Council do hereby proclaim today, July 7th, 2025, as Garrett Flack Day. Give Garrett a round of applause. Anything to add? Here, Garrett's gonna say a few things.
First and foremost, thank you so much, Mayor Levisay, and also the entirety of the City Council. It's truly an honor to be up here. Also, thank you to my coach, Mr. Benny in the back, and my parents. The support of you guys have all truly been amazing, and I couldn't have done it without you.
Well said. Thank you, Garrett. All right. I guess now we're gonna do it. Ready? Three, two, one. Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations, Mayor. Thank you so much. Give it another round of applause. Thank you all for being here. You are welcome to stay and enjoy the rest of our business. If you would like to exit now, you may do that. We do have some exciting things coming up on the agenda tonight, so thank you for coming. Can't compete with baseball, I guess. All right. We'll wait a couple minutes, let everybody get settled back in here. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Hawes Estate rezoning. I believe the staff has the minds ready to the record.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated June 24th, 2025, with the following attachments: Staff Report with attachments, Application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on June 7th, 2025, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, planning commission presentations, Title IV Land Use, Blue Springs Code of Ordinance by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, bill approving the rezoning, and bill approving the conditional use permit. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Staff, you go ahead and make your presentation. Be sworn in.
I do. So, good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you this evening is a request for approval of a rezoning and a conditional use permit for the property located, I don't have that window, excuse me, located, as you see on sight here, at Wyatt and Shroud Road. And it's approximately seventeen acre site. And the applicant is proposing to divide these three, this site into three lots. Lot one would be approximately seven acres, which will be developed by Tri-County Water Authority for a major water infrastructure facility. And lots two and three will each have approximately five plus or minus acres to be developed as a single-family residential properties. So the 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as a neighborhood intended for residential living with access to civic amenities and connected street patterns. The S2 specific area plan identifies this site as a low-density residential appropriate for less than five units per acre and in areas that are further from the neighborhood centers. This development combining a low-density residential use and with the essential utility infrastructure aligns with both the long-range plans of the Comprehensive Plan. The request to rezone the property from an SF twelve, or to rezone the property to an SF twelve, which is currently a county agricultural zoning. This zoning is intended for the low-density development on larger parcels and to buffer residential areas from incompatible uses. Lot one will accommodate a utility major use, which includes the infrastructure such as water tanks that will be operated under public utilities, and the rezoning supports this land use and allows this parcel to be developed in accordance under the SF twelve standards. The conditional use permit is a proposed facility that will require this permit to meet the intended, the intent of the utility major land use definition, which includes water infrastructure. The conditional use permit is required due to the nature of this use, and that the site will include water, piping, pumps, and storage tanks to support water supply and fire flow to surrounding areas, and will also have a daily inspection that will be conducted, and that this facility is remotely monitored with very minimal traffic impact. This project, excuse me, this project will be developed in multiple phases. The property currently includes an existing farmhouse and outbuildings located on Lot One. These structures will be removed by Tri-County Water Authority at the expense no later than December 31st, 2026. We do have an agreement on file. And the existing trees that you see here located in the center of Lot One that comes down will also be preserved where feasible, and then there will be an additional landscaping incorporated to enhance the visual and environmental quality of this lot. Lot One will have a gated access drive off of southeast Wyatt Road, designed to allow vehicles to fully exit the roadway before stopping. Lots two and three will have individual driveway access points off of Shroud Road with no gates. As part of the public improvements plan for this area, there will be a five-foot ADA compliant sidewalk that will be installed along the nor, or the south side of southeast Wyatt Road. A traffic study was not required, as the utility site will generate very minimal vehicle trips. And the parking for Lot One will be under accordance of the UDC Schedule B for utility major use. And then lots two and three will be required, the two spaces per dwelling units. A stormwater management plan must be prepared by a licensed engineer and reviewed by Public Works. The plan must meet APWA 5600 and Mark BMP manual standards. Detention areas and overflow paths will contain within the drainage easements. Lot One will not connect to the sanitary system due to its use. Lots two and three will be served by a private septic system. And lots two and three will be on a private septic system for the following. Lots two and three will, are not part of the NID of this location, and therefore has not been counted towards the area for the sanitary sewer that's located. And on the east side of the property, that is a forced main, which would not allow this subdivision area to hook into a forced main. And then under M, M, Missouri DNR supplements to the city code, that these two lots, lots two and three, are also over three plus micro, three plus or minus acres, which is allowed to be on septic under the state statute. The SF twelve zoning district will require a minimum of ten percent open space. And a conceptual landscape plan has been submitted, and a more detailed plan will be reviewed during the site plan design review. And then, per Planning Commission, they have requested additional plant units and buffering to be required on Lot One for the water tanks. The building and site design for Lot One will comply to the UDC Section 407.090 of the non-residential design standards. And final materials, elevations, and screening will be reviewed administratively during the site plan design review. In conclusion, this project supports essential public infrastructure while providing large lot, single-family development compatible with the surrounding land use. The proposal aligns with the intent of the Comprehensive Plan and meets the standards of the UDC. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, the conditional use permit with conditions, which are all outlined in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here.
Are there any questions for staff before we go to the applicant?
Just a clarification, where the tanks are going to be. There's a residential property there now, and I assume, based upon the conversation you just had, that there's septic involved in that property. When that's torn down, does that just sit there? I mean, that's just, does there any, anything has to be done to that?
I would leave that for the applicant to answer for Tri-County Water Authority.
I'm just curious.
I don't have an answer.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions from the council for staff? Okay, the applicant's present. You can come up and give us a presentation. Go ahead and be sworn in. Give us your name and address for the record. I do.
My name is John Overstreet. I'm the General Manager for Tri-County Water Authority. Response to your question is, those facilities will be removed as a part of our overall project. So our intent, as you can see from the plans, to build two two-million-gallon ground storage reservoirs. Eventually, a pump station will be there that will supply water to both District 13 and the city of Blue Springs from that location. The piping that you see that's outlined there is a result, the relocation is a result of the traffic circle that the city intends to build there. And this is a prime location for those three foot, those three entities to come together for the interconnects at that location.
You have other questions for the applicant? Do you have anything else to add that staff didn't cover?
Nope. I think she's done a great job. Appreciate all the efforts that they've put in to it. It's been a long process. We appreciate your time, the Hawes's family. We've worked with them for over a year to get this to conclusion, and we're looking forward to moving ahead with the project.
Yeah, that'd be great for that area. Okay, you did a great job as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Is there any other comments from the council before I go to the public? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience would like to speak in support of, in support of? Anyone like to speak in opposition, too? Any final comments before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is introduction and reading of the Hawes Estate rezoning.
I will introduce. First reading of Bill number 5329, an ordinance approving a rezoning for a property located at 27711 East Wyatt Road, consisting of seventeen plus or minus acres from AGC Agriculture County to SF twelve Large Lot Single Family Residential District for utility major water infrastructure and tanks for Hawes Estate.
Your Honor, I move, we approve on the first reading and move to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have another question. I probably should have asked it earlier, but the sidewalk, how does that fit into the sidewalks on Wyatt Road?
Are they on the north side or are they on this side? Okay, I'm seeing from our Assistant City Administrator, they're on the north side, so they should not be affected by this project.
But there's going to be sidewalk on the south side as well.
I don't believe so.
At this time...
I thought it was on the, the plan.
At this time, we're still in design on Wyatt, on the Wyatt Road East extension and the improvements there. Right now, currently, because most of the, the south side of Wyatt East sits in, in county, we are not putting sidewalks on that south side unless there's property that is in the Blue Springs City limits. So more towards Seven Highway.
Okay, I just...
The rendering does show sidewalks, though, on the south side.
The picture does. That's why I asked the question.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comments? We're on first reading, discussion. So any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, second reading.
Second reading of Bill 5329, an ordinance approving a rezoning for a property located at 27711 East Wyatt Road, consisting of seventeen plus or minus acres from AGC Agriculture County to SF twelve Large Lot Single Family Residential District for utility major water infrastructure and tanks for Hawes Estate.
I move to approve the second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Tholen.
Aye.
Brummel.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Carried unanimously given ordinance number 5431.
Next is item seven, introduction and reading of Bill 5330, the Hawes Estate Conditional Use Permit.
I'll introduce.
First reading of Bill number 5330, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow the utility major water infrastructure land use in the SF twelve Large Lot Single Family Residential District located at 27711 East Wyatt Road for Hawes Estate in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, I move to approve the first reading and, excuse me, and move to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, second reading.
Second reading, Bill 5330, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow the utility major water infrastructure land use in the SF twelve Large Lot Single Family Residential District located at 27711 East Wyatt Road for Hawes Estate in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, I move to approve the second and final reading and assign appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Brummel.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Carried unanimously given ordinance number 5432.
Next item is a public hearing on our capital improvements program. I see our City Administrator headed to the microphone there to do this presentation.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated June 16th, 2025, with the following attachments: PowerPoint presentation, draft of proposed 2026-2030 capital improvements program, public notice as published in the examiner on June 20th, 2025, and bill adopting the capital improvements program. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Believe you still need to be sworn in.
I do. Christine Kate, 903 West Main Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we are presenting the proposed fiscal year 2026 to 2030 capital improvements program. Significant changes in this year's plan include moving the August 2024 bond election projects from the unfunded list to the funded list, the inclusion of a twenty-year preventative pavement maintenance program, and implementing a replacement plan for street department vehicles and equipment. More details about these changes will be discussed throughout this presentation. The preparation of the CIP this year actually began last August after the bond election, since we knew the projects were going to be funded and we had bond issue to get completed, which was done in April. The total program this year, including funded and unfunded projects, totals $237.6 million. Forty-eight point seven percent of the program is funded at $116 million, and fifty-one point three percent of the program is unfunded. Of the funded project total of $116 million, fifty-four point six percent is budgeted for maintenance projects, forty-two point three percent for capital improvements, and three percent for equipment. In last year's CIP, only four point two two percent was, for capital improvements. Again, this illustrates the impact that the bond election has on the CIP and funded projects. Last year's total CIP was $258 million, and this year's CIP is $237 million, a decrease of eight point two percent. And that has decreased as we have completed projects and then moved more projects to the funded list. The funded projects by year by category are shown on this slide. In addition to the bond projects, construction of Southwest Park that is scheduled for fiscal years 26 and 27, and other significant projects in the next five years include improvements for AA Highway for $9.4 million, Highway 7 South sidewalk infill for $2.7 million. The total planned expenditures over the whole five-year program for pavement management is $33.5 million. The funded CIP of $116 million, it's compared to $101 million in last year's funded CIP, an increase of $15 million or 14.9 percent. The funded projects by year by funding, fund and funding source are included in this table. This illustrates the segregation of funds by revenue type and shows funding available for specific types of projects. Two significant changes are being implemented this year, including both a preventative pavement maintenance program and a vehicle, equipment, and replacement program. These two programs are based upon the available funding from the transportation sales tax, which is approximately five and a half million. Last year, the Public Works team evaluated all the vehicles and equipment and proposed an ideal replacement program. Based on this recommendation, council appropriated a million and a half in the current year's budget to replace several pieces of equipment that had exceeded their useful life. Going forward, a plan has been developed to use $500,000 each year from the transportation sales tax for equipment and vehicle replacement. The remaining five million or more will be used for the preventative pavement maintenance program, and this program will be explained to you in detail upon the conclusion of my presentation by Dave Christensen with Cochran Engineering. Another item to note in the transportation sales tax fund is grants and future bond issues are included in this fund, and this is why some of the years exceed five and a half million. This slide shows the breakdown of specific projects that are funded next year for fiscal year 25 and 26, and their total expenditures equal $33.6 million. $475,000 is for public safety, including locker room expansion and the replacement of the screens here in the council chambers. $3.2 million for parks, including improvements at Rotary Park, initial construction costs for Southwest Park, and improvements for Central Park. $26.4 million for streets, including several bond projects, the downtown streetscape. $13 million for the PPP program, the ADP to Duncan Turn Lane, Southwest 12-street improvements, and an overlay of Mock Avenue from Highway 7 to ADP. A couple of other projects from previous CIP programs will also be constructed next year, including Wyatt Road East from Seven Highway to ADP and the initial planning for the double-A improvements. $100,000 is included for stormwater maintenance and water and sewer projects total $3.4 million. Last year's CIP included unfunded projects totaling $158 million, and this year's CIP unfunded projects total $121 million. This decrease reflects moving the bond projects to the funded list. The largest remaining unfunded project is $60.3 million for improvements to the Snire Bar Wastewater Treatment Plant. This project includes improvements required by the EPA that must be completed within six years. The city applied for $12 million in grant funding from DNR to assist with this project and was vetoed by the governor last week. The city will seek low-interest funding from the State of Missouri State Revolving Fund if the voters approve this option at the April 2026 municipal election. The changes and additions to this year's CIP include the addition of $39.7 million in unfunded new projects. Significant projects that were added include several projects for the police department totaling $25.9 million, $8.9 million for the utility funds, $3.4 million for streets, and $1.6 million for parks projects. $38.4 million worth of project, of projects were moved from the unfunded to the funded list, which again are primarily the bond projects, some equipment, and the screen upgrades for the council chambers. $11.1 million worth of projects were added to the fiscal year 2930 for the fifth year of this program. This project is titled twenty, or this sheet is still titled 2829, should be 29 and 30. And I did verify that on this sheet, it shows four and a half million for the pavement management program in 2930, but it is five million. That number just didn't get updated on the sheet. The notice of the public hearing was published in the newspaper on Friday, June 20th, and then we would ask for the adoption of this CIP this evening, and are available to answer any questions you have and/or can answer questions once Dave has completed his presentation.
Any questions for Ms. Kates before we get to the other presentation? Okay. Great job.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen, would you like to come up?
Yep, yep.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. Okay, so tonight, we're going to talk. Yes, so we got you.
I need your name and address for the record, Dave.
Dave Christensen, seven thirty seven Rutter Road, Van, Missouri. Okay, so what we're talking about tonight is the pavement maintenance plan. Just starting out, and we talked about this a little bit before, before we got started last fall. What we're trying to do here is preserve the structural integrity of all the roadway system. Delays in pavement maintenance, if you delay projects, the freeze thaw gets in there and makes the potholes bigger and the cracks bigger. So we're trying to be proactive with, with the plan here, and that's what we're going to talk about tonight. Also, there's, you know, this is, this is a plan that we are going to have to revise and update. I say here every few years, but probably every year or two, we should look at it and revise things as we go. For example, this year, we had great unit bid pricing, so we were, I think, a million and a half below on our budget. So it's, it's good to just relook at everything every year and update it as we go. So, but if you have a plan like we're showing tonight, it's easy to do. So just a little background here, this is what you guys did last year in two thousand twenty four. I know you have, I think you all have handouts, you can see it, I knew you wouldn't be able to see it on the screen here, so I think George printed out handouts for everybody. So you're probably looking at that, I can hardly see the screen from up, from back here. So the yellow streets, what we did last year, what the city did last year. These, these green streets are the ones that were identified in your bond issue. And also, just remind everybody, we added streets to that plan to, to make it, as I'll talk about, you know, if you're in an area, you might as well do the streets, the side streets and cul-de-sacs while you're there and get that done. So we did add, I can't remember how many streets to this project, but we did add numerous streets to the project. So that is the current plan, things are going pretty well right now. So again, what, what we're trying to do here, instead of like you saw on the first sheet with the yellow streets, we were doing a street here and a street there and kind of all over the place. What we're trying to do now is we're trying to organize the streets in groups so that you come into an area and you pave all the streets in the area, the subdivision, whatever makes sense, so you don't have to come back next year and then the next year, and then you're driving on the new streets, you're cutting butt joints everywhere, traffic, construction traffic for the residents who live on the corner street who has this street done this year and the other street done next year. So that's the whole concept here on, on grouping the streets. So in your handout, I know you can't see this, and I can't remember how many groups we have, but there's a lot of them. So what we did here, and we, what we did here is we organized all your streets, what made sense from a paving perspective, and then we, we named them by group, so we can kind of see what group we're going to do when. Also, we do our arterial collector roadways, those are not part of the groups, but those are your more major heavy traffic roads, so those are identified also throughout the city, so those are the ones in the red. What we do then is we quantify everything, each street, each length, each width. We visually inspect every single roadway, we rank all the roads, and then the rankings, the roads goes to the ranking of the group, and then you rank the groups by, you know, worst, worst to best. And then you start to organize your plan. The other thing that's, that's critical here too is, is, you know, the bigger the project, the much better the unit pricing is going to be, and the better bang for the buck, as we saw this last deal. So one of the goals here was, was to try to make big, big projects. And then again, what we did is we bid it in the winter, which was the best time, got great pricing. So that's why we're talking tonight about the two thousand twenty six project, so that we can get started on that one, core all the pavements, figure out what needs to be done, get the plans done and get it out to bid at the end of this, this year, so we can open up bids ideally January twenty six. So everybody can read that, I'm sure there's, so it's, it's a big spreadsheet. We're doing a twenty year plan, all the numbers, all the cost, budget numbers are present value. And that's our first, you know, not our first crack at it, but that's our, our crack at it right now. What we have is we have on the top part, your arterios, collectors, and then your groupings below that. So in the report you'll get in the future, is everybody able to see this? I mean, you guys can see the eleven by seventeen sheet handouts, they don't fit on the eight and a half by elevens. Just talking about the next three years, I do have the bond issue projects Christine was talking about on the top there that's on your handout, and just focusing in on twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight, on what arterios we're going to, proposing to do and what groups we're proposing to do. And there's your caper projects, kind of a close up of those, if anybody has any questions on those, but I think Christine kind of covered those pretty well on what caper projects. You have a handout too that's showing with the blue lines what caper projects will be done in the next year or two. So that's a lot. So here's the twenty six paving project that we're proposing. Eighty, almost eighty six lane miles of roadways, you can see those groups, there's the groups in there, there's arterial roadways in there. And also, we're adding Mock Avenue to the project, so it's thirteen million dollars was the total for the paving, plus the two million for Mock Avenue, so we're at fifteen million dollar proposed two thousand twenty six paving project. And I can't, what was it last year, this year was fifty two, so it's, it's a lot more. I have pictures here of, of roads in the groups, they're really bad, the ones we're proposing to do. I'm just clicking through pictures here and and there's actually the group names on the top, you can't see it on the screen, but here's the streets, so I just have some examples in here. They're in pretty bad shape. So that one's actually a really bad picture and the, the picture doesn't do, but there's potholes and this one really needs to be done bad. So, so then, here's your, in purple, again, on your handout, you can't, it's hard to see from here. We're back down to about a five million dollar project with, with groups, Adams Ferry Parkway is in there now. So that's, that's your two, proposed twenty seven at five million with the map. And twenty eight, again, five million-ish, greens, we're doing the streets with green. And then as you go back to the spreadsheet, you'll see every year what we're proposing. And again, like I said, working with other cities, you look at it, you know, the big thing is, is the twenty six one, that's the one we're focused on for next year. If we're good with that one, that's the one we do. You bid the project, get the, get the new unit pricing, and then you go back and you, next year, we just firm up what we're going to do for twenty seven, which is what I showed you, and just keep going until we get through them all. So just kind of a recap, you guys have about five hundred and sixty five lane miles, and if you go from the two thousand twenty four, the yellow roads, all the way to our proposing twenty eight, we'll be through thirty eight point two percent of your roads. So we're making progress, you guys are making progress. So that's all I had, if anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for Mr. Christensen? From the council? Councilmember Erickson?
I think I have a couple of comments. One, the complaints have been few. A good friend bicycle rider is, is just thrilled with the quality of the work that's being done now. I asked Ms. Kates this question earlier, but it occurred to me, the reason why. I noticed that Saunders Road was paved, and it's not on any of the lists. But there, there's one called Fawn that's to be done this year. And my understanding then, based upon what you're saying, is if you're in the neighborhood, you're going to take care of it. And I guess if, if, if we see that and saw that on the, the map, that fits in with what you're doing, and so my compliments for that. I think that, that answers the question of why it'd get done, I didn't see it on the map. So anyway, good work.
Thank you, appreciate it. And I agree, I looked at it today and I think it's, looks good. It's going well. And I like to hear there's a few complaints.
Well, there were a couple of complaints, but they were little bitty ones.
That's good, I, I like that, that's, that's music layers, so it's good. It's going fast.
Other questions from the council?
I, I had a couple of questions, Mr. Christensen, so I see you have a twenty year plan here. Do you know about how often that means a, a given street in the city will be replaced? Is it once every five years, once every twelve years, once every twenty?
Well, okay, so the way to look at it is that, you know, it really depends upon the bottom line, that number, that five million a year. You know, we're going to do as much, the budget current, this year, next year it's great because we got, you guys got fifteen million, so we're going to do a lot. Then, then we're going back to the five million. So the answer then is, you take your five million, and what can you do in twenty seven, what can you do in twenty eight, until you get to all the streets? And, and to answer your question on a roadway, when you do what we're doing, mill, leveling course, overlay, and if you guys go through every couple of years like I'm showing to do the crack filling, to keep up with the crack filling, we, we should expect about a twenty year until you have to do it again, mill and overlay.
Okay.
Twenty years is a good rule of thumb.
You, you're answering my question, but in the opposite way about asking it. So, so essentially what I'm getting at is the same thing you're saying. So if, if your twenty year plan means every road in Blue Springs gets replaced every fifteen years, but we want every road in Blue Springs to get placed every ten years, how many more millions of dollars do we need to put?
Yeah, and you don't want to do that, you don't need to do that. You don't need to do it every ten, I mean.
So you're saying every twenty is about the plan?
I mean, if you, i- if it's a good job, which, which this is, easily expect fifteen years, easily, okay? And then twenty years is kind of the sweet spot. And if you keep up with the crack filling, twenty years, it might be in really good shape. And then there's other things we can do too. We're not, we're not there yet, but there's things called Nova Chip, which puts that top skin back on, we talked about that about six months ago on your arterial roadways. Doesn't work good on your residential because of the big machinery, it's hard to get through there. Other cities do things like micro-surfacing, and there's just new technology coming all the time. We don't have to worry about that right now because we're just doing mill, leveling course, overlay. But yeah, in twelve years or so, it'd be nice to put that skin back down on, on these roads we're doing today.
So is that five point three million annually sufficient to maintain the system of our size in, in an acceptable way?
I can't, honestly, I, I really was focused on the next three years. And I, I, I don't even know if I sent you the, all the way, I, I kind, you know, we're working on it. So I don't know the answer to your question tonight, but
And as you said, I know we reevaluate this.
I could figure out what it would, if, if I said, hey, we're going to resurface every road every twenty years, I could, I could do that exercise to figure that out for you and to see what it would cost. But again, it, it doesn't change a lot because you guys got five million a year. If you give me, if you give us eight million for next, or for the next year, then we'll just, because we can use it here, we're not, you have plenty of roads to do, so.
Yeah, clearly, we're playing catch up and we're doing a good job at doing that, but I'm looking more long term. And a twenty year plan is better than any plan we've had before because we've never had any. But I want to make sure it's going to be successful long term and it maintains what the residents expect. So at some point, when we have that conversation, I think that would be useful.
Yeah, when, when, when I finish the twenty year plan, which again, I was focused on next three to five to ten, we'll get on that, those numbers, yes, I can do those numbers for you to figure out what it is.
So besides lane miles, the other thing, you, you said we have five hundred and sixty five lane miles, which is basically one lane on each side for one road, right? It kind of doubles it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, because I've always heard we got about two hundred and sixty miles of streets in Blue Springs, lane miles essentially doubles it.
Lane miles is a, is a hard ques, it, it's a question because it's lane miles, you know, it's not length of roadway, you know. Adams Ferry Parkway has five lanes, six lanes in some areas, lane miles, lanes.
So these estimates you have for the mileage each year, those are lane miles for eighty six lane miles?
Yeah.
And all that, okay. Because I think we had planned for the bond project to just get about thirty five miles out of all fifteen million. You guys have already got us up to fifty two this year.
You're right.
And if we get another eighty six next year, then worry about quadrupling what we expected to do with that bond issue. So appreciate you guys being involved in this project and helping us do more with the taxpayers' dollars, and thank you for all your hard work on this.
You're welcome, it's been fun. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from the council for Mr. Christensen? All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Before I go to the audience, we're still on the public hearing, any comments or questions from the council for the public hearing? All right, I do have a, well, Ms. Kate, you have anything to add before we do continue the public hearing?
Yep.
I do have a speaker appearance form, I think we could do this at the end, but since it is talking about road resurfacing. Bill Perry, Mr. Perry, do you want to come up and address the council during the public hearing here? If you'll be sworn in, give us your name and address for the record.
I do.
Go and give us your name and address.
Yes, I'm William Perry, and I'm located at fifteen oh one Northwest Primrose Lane.
Now, have you here as in support of, I'm guessing, do you have other comments to add on this?
Yes, this is, what he just discussed is one of our problems. I live on Primrose Lane, the street, I've lived there since nineteen ninety nine, and that's twenty six years. Primrose Lane has never been resurfaced. They came along with some kind of a topping from the years two thousand one to two thousand nine, and it didn't last, first rainstorm washed most of it away. Secondly, the street has been there since nineteen eighty nine. That is thirty six years. We were, we are a community of seventy one homes. We are located off of Valley View Road. Questions I have tonight, what we have tried, we have talked to the, let me get my ducks in a row here, the Public Works and Engineering Department, trying to find out when we would be resurfaced. And we have found, we haven't gotten an answer. I don't even see it up here going out to two thousand and twenty eight. We are in dire need of resurfacing. We have cracks that are more than one inch wide, grass growing up through those cracks. Also, we are, I'm sorry, excuse me, we, our streets are one point two lane miles. One block from us going on as we speak today. All the equipment is in at, at the street one block up. And hearing this conversation of trying to group, and I understand the asphalt, a little bit about the asphalt business. The equipment is a very expensive thing to move into neighborhoods. And this one is one block away, they just started there. One block away, are we going to be part of that grouping?
I knew this question was coming, can I go back to my presentation?
Absolutely, if you've got a, go ahead.
And I got an idea. And I just heard about this actually. Okay. Let's go back to what we're talking about, you're exactly right. We guys, you guys are okay, do I have a pointer? Can't, is there a way to
The mouse might be
focus in on that right there? Do you got a pointer here, let me just walk up and point. So what he's talking about? So
You'll need a microphone, Dave, so you might I think George, George might help you out, let's, let's let George do this.
Give him this spotlight here. Go up there, right there, right there, that's what he's talking about. Okay, George, so, so what he's talking about is, okay, so this is what we're doing this year. This is again, when we started with the thirty five miles, we added on a bunch to make it work right, right? With the best we could, and we had to stop and start somewhere. So what, what you guys are doing is you're doing this here, you're doing this here, and this is what we're talking about, and it really does need to be done, it really does. And, I mean, it's bad. Again, there's a lot that's bad, it's bad everywhere, but since they're there, it would make a lot of sense to do it now. And that would be a change order, and this is very unconventional to bring this up, but that would be a change order while they're there, you guys, great unit pricing, just to do this now, get it done. And it's, it's what, it's what we did five months ago, we just added on a little piece here and a little piece there, because of mobilization costs, and it is really bad.
Good.
So
Well, Mr. Perry, it sounds like we have some ideas here. I think as you recognize, there are lots of roads in Blue Springs that need some attention, so
I understand.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, letting us know the need in your, in your neighborhood there. We'll get with the council here and try to come up with a plan. Regardless, it sounds like we need to evaluate and move it up. I'm not going to promise that his plan is going to happen this year in this meeting right now, but I'll promise we'll look at it and see if we can
Well, I appreciate the consideration, and we thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we're still on public hearing. Does anyone else in the audience like to speak in support of, in support of, in opposition to? Any other comments from the council before we close the public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda then is item nine, introduction and reading of bill five three three one to adopt the capital improvement program.
I'll introduce. Mayor and council, there was an error in the ordinance title in the agenda packet. The year was listed incorrectly, but is correct in the body of the document. So I'll read the correct years and the title for the first and second readings. First reading of bill number five three three one, an ordinance adopting the city of Blue Springs capital improvements program for fiscal years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty.
Your honor, I move to approve on the first reading and move to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, second read.
Second reading of bill number five three three one, an ordinance adopting the city of Blue Springs capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty twenty-five, twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty.
Your honor, I move to approve the second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll just add then, appreciate all the staff's hard work on this capital improvement program. It's uh, something we've been working on for a while to actually have not just, hey, it'd be nice to get nicer roads, but a plan in place to do as Mr. Christensen outlined, uh, something regular, something we can count on, something we can communicate with the residents, when they can expect uh, their road to get some attention. And so appreciate all the hard work of Cochrane Engineering. Appreciate all the staff's hard work. Uh, this is a big budget, but it's gonna do a lot of good things. So uh, I'll just add those comments. With that, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Brummel.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Care to unanimously give an ordinance number five four three three.
Next is item ten. This is a resolution only to adopt a task order for Cochrane Engineering for the pavement management program.
I'll introduce.
I just need a motion to approve, actually.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second her motion to approve.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Next is our ordinance section. So I don't have any public comment forms for this section. So item twelve is introduction and reading of bill five three three two, approving asphaltic services final plat. Now you can introduce it.
I'll introduce. First reading of bill five three three two, an ordinance approving the final plat for Shady Green, first plat for asphaltic surfaces, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, I move to approve on the first reading and move to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, second reading.
Second reading bill five three three two, an ordinance approving the final plat for Shady Green, first plat for asphaltic surfaces, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, I move to approve the second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Rowan.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Brummel.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Care to unanimously give an ordinance number five four three four.
Next is introduction and reading of bill five three three three, the Eagles Ridge Estates final plat.
I'll introduce. First reading bill five three three three, an ordinance approving a final plat for Eagles Ridge Estates P R O fifth lot, lots one fifty-one through one eighty-two and track G, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, I move to approve on the first reading and move to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are we on first reading?
Yes.
This is second, okay.
First reading.
Did we do it right?
It's the first reading.
This is first reading. Uh, is there any discussion on first reading? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, second reading.
Second reading bill five three three three, an ordinance approving a final plat for Eagles Ridge Estates P R O fifth lot, lots one fifty-one through one eighty-two and track G, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, I move to approve the second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Brummel.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Care to unanimously give an ordinance number five four three five.
Next is introduction and reading of bill five three three four, a code amendment related to intoxicating liquor at the Fall Fun Fest.
I'll introduce. First reading bill five three three four, an ordinance amending title six, business and occupation, chapter six hundred, alcoholic beverages, section six hundred point three four zero, consumption in certain public places during Fall Fun Festival, restrictions of the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your honor, I move to approve on that first reading and move to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, second reading.
Second reading bill five three three four, an ordinance amending title six, business and occupation, chapter six hundred, alcoholic beverages, section six hundred point three four oh, consumption in certain public places during Fall Fun Festival, restrictions of the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your honor, I move to approve the second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Tholen.
Aye.
Brummel.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Care to unanimously give an ordinance number five four three six.
Item fifteen is also just a resolution, so I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the downtown public area for the Fall Fun Fest.
I motion to approve.
Okay.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Next is item sixteen, introduction and reading of bill five three three five, a contract with Mid-America Regional Council for Oates Administration of Vesper Hall.
I'll introduce. First reading bill five three three five, an ordinance approving a contract between the city of Blue Springs and Mid-America Regional Council for congregant and homebound meal preparation, site transportation via Oates Inc., and the administration of Vesper Hall.
Your honor, I move to approve the uh, first reading and move to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, second reading.
Second reading bill five three three five, an ordinance approving a contract between the city of Blue Springs and Mid-America Regional Council for congregant and homebound meal preparation, site transportation via Oates Inc., and the administration of Vesper Hall.
Your honor, I move to approve the second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Councilmember Erickson.
I, I was, I was assuming when I read this through that this was for Vesper Hall. Does this have anything to do with our issues we've had in the past about picking up folks? For instance, our vision impaired, does that, does that have anything to do with it?
This is the funding for that, but I don't think this is the Oates contract for that. Is that right, Mr. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on second reading? Okay, then roll call.
Councilmember Brummel.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Care to unanimously give an ordinance number five four three seven.
Next is item seventeen, introduction and reading of bill five three three six, approving pavement, approving payment for a grant award from Mid-America Regional Council for seven highway corridor improvements.
I'll introduce. First reading bill five three three six, an ordinance approving project views with Mid-America Regional Council for sidewalks along Southwest State Route seven, highway from U S forty highway to Leggett Road.
Your honor, I move to approve the first reading and move to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, second reading.
Second reading bill five three three six, an ordinance approving project views with Mid-America Regional Council for sidewalks along Southwest State Route seven highway from U S forty highway to Leggett Road.
Your honor, I move to approve the second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Brummel.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Care to unanimously give an ordinance number five four three eight.
Well, we're not done yet. That was a lot, but we still have more. But next item on the agenda is a presentation from Mr. George there for Downtown Streetscape Enhancement Project. And this is just a presentation, is not a public hearing, so we just get to listen to Georgetown for a while.
All right. Everyone hear me? Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you all for giving me time to give you this presentation today. Uh, I want to use this opportunity to provide an overview of the project as it stands today. This will include a timeline, meeting details from the Downtown Streetscape Enhancements Task Force, a review of current fixtures and parking options for Main Street, uh, the renderings that were presented to the public, and the feedback we received from the residents of Blue Springs. So, the city council adopted the downtown master plan on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, after months of public meetings and gathering stakeholder input. The council created the downtown master plan implementation task force on May sixth, twenty twenty-four, to identify strategies, priorities, and timelines. In August twenty twenty-four, recommendations were presented to the city council. Voters of the city of Blue Springs approved a forty million dollar bond in August twenty twenty-four for various improvements throughout the city, which included five million dollars for the downtown master plan capital improvements, including sidewalks, curbs, and streetscapes. The city has contracted with Cochrane Engineering for Main Street improvements, including public engagement to define the preferred streetscape design. On April seventh, twenty twenty-five, the city council established the Downtown Streetscape Enhancements Task Force. This group was tasked with selecting a streetlight design and color for Main and Eleventh Streets. The task force was given instructions to hold meetings to discuss streetlight design options. Following the task force's selections, the city would then present the renderings in a public forum before making final recommendations to city council. On June tenth, twenty twenty-five, the city hosted a public meeting to present the renderings and solicit feedback from the public via public forum, dot exercises, and an online survey. This presentation will be a summation of the public feedback to help inform the mayor and council members' decisions on the project. All of this is information that you are likely very well aware of. I'm just trying to contextualize it and provide some uh, history for the members of the audience. So this is the area that we'll be talking about today. This is Main Street from Fifteenth Street to Seventh Highway. And first up, we're gonna be talking about streetlights. So these are the current streetlights that we have out on Main Street right now. They are fifteen feet tall, seventeen feet tall with the acorn lamp on top. It is a smooth pole as opposed to a fluted pole. So at the initial meeting of the Downtown Streetscape Enhancements Task Force in April twenty twenty-five, Dave Christensen of Cochrane, Cochrane Engineering gave a presentation on decorative street lighting selection with examples of streetlight components. The task force discussed design options and how they would affect the downtown streetscape. Questions were raised about height, brightness, cost, and design configurations. A decision was made by the task force to have Cochrane provide streetlight components for review with city staff pulling members of the task force to rank their selection preferences. Cochrane was instructed to provide renderings of these selections at the next meeting of the task force. These were the choices that they made for the general aesthetic design of the streetscape. At the following meeting in May twenty twenty-five, schematic renderings of the component selections were presented. The task force reached a consensus on light and base options, then deciding to have Cochrane produce renderings of both single and double lamp options with different decorative fixtures to be presented to the public before being taken to council. These were the schematic remen- uh, schematic renderings that Cochrane provided, and these were the selections that the task force made. From there, Cochrane provided some imaging. This is, uh, there's two options. One is a smooth pole with a, uh, this, uh, this is a fluted pole with a more decorative fixture, and then the other one is a smooth pole with less decorative fixtures. I learned a lot about streetlights during this process. I also see them everywhere now. It's kind of funny. Uh, next, we're gonna be talking about parking and sidewalks. So at the public meeting on June tenth, twenty twenty-five, Cochrane Engineering gave a presentation on their parking analysis of downtown Blue Springs. This included an overview of existing parking inventory as well as data on actual parking usage. Analysis would be used to determine if conversion from angled to parallel parking would be a viable option. So this is, uh, Twelfth Street to Eleventh Street. These are the angled spots. There's forty-two of them. And then up top, the, uh, twelve hundred block, there are five angled and two parallel. This is the city-owned surface lot at Twelfth Street with twenty-three spaces. And this is the city-owned surface lot in front of City Hall, uh, off Tenth Street with twenty-two spaces. And this is a picture of the existing sidewalks as they currently stand. So, some general overview on parking numbers. From Fifteenth Street to the railroad crossing, there are twenty-two parking spots. From the railroad crossing to Twelfth, there are seven. From Twelfth to Eleven, there are forty-two. And from Eleventh to Tenth, ten. And from Tenth to Seven, forty-seven. So there are one hundred and eighteen striped parking spots on Main Street from Seventh Highway to Fifteenth Street. For parking lot, the lot at Twelfth, there's twenty-three parking spots. At Tenth, there's twenty-two parking spots. The public parking lot between Tenth and Eleventh, behind the chamber, there is eighty-four parking spots, which means we have a total of one hundred and twenty-nine parking spots in public parking lots. And that actually does not include the former First Baptist Church or City Hall after hours. So all in all, there is two hundred and forty-seven available parking spots in downtown Blue Springs right now, and that is not including the First Baptist Church or, uh, the City Hall after hours. The decisions that will be made on sidewalk length will affect the existing parking. The following were the options presented in the downtown master plan of potential scenarios for parking and streetscape improvements. This is an image of the master plan that is available on the website right now. The option to rebuild angled parking, which would keep the tenant, uh, the ten-foot sidewalks, the parking configuration would remain the same on Main Street, and the scope of sidewalk amenities are limited. The option for a hybrid angle and paralleled parking with fifteen-foot sidewalks, one side of the street is retained for angled parking, the other side becomes parallel parking to allow for wider sidewalks. And then the option for nineteen-foot sidewalks, which would be parallel parking on both sides of the street. Any of these options would, uh, they will influence the yield of parking. So these were the renderings that were presented at the public forum. This is fifteen-foot sidewalks, single lamps with angled and parallel options. This is the hybrid parking option, uh, hybrid configuration for parking. This is the same, uh, but with double lamps. And then this is the nineteen-foot sidewalks, uh, with single lamps, and it would be parallel options on both sides. And this was the option with the double lamps. So moving on to the public feedback. Uh, feedback was solicited from a variety of sources. The Downtown Streetscape Enhancements Task Force, the June tenth public meeting, the dot exercise, online survey, and email. Participation in the online survey was where the city received most of its feedback on the project, and survey results reflect much of the same feedback we received at the public meeting. Form submissions were anonymous for context. And there were over four hundred submissions. So what, the first question on the survey was, would you prefer single lamp or double lamp streetlights on downtown Main Street? And overwhelmingly, double lamp, uh, had the majority of the votes there, seventy-eight percent of the votes. Uh, of the streetlight options presented, which one would be your preference for a new streetlight design on Main Street in downtown Blue Springs? This was the second question. These were the options, uh, and I'm gonna provide you a picture here. Uh, these, it really was a dead heat between everything. The votes kind of were tied amongst them. If you break it down, uh, there were more votes for option two in the single than there were in the double, um, but it really seemed like it was split pretty evenly down the middle. So that's between the first option, which is fluted and a more decorative finish, versus the second option, which is a little less decorative and a smooth pole. The third question was, would you prefer fifteen-foot or nineteen-foot sidewalks on downtown, uh, on Main Street in downtown Blue Springs? And, uh, it was again overwhelming support for the fifteen-foot sidewalks. And the last question was, of the four options presented, which would you prefer for downtown streetscapes, uh, downtown Streetscape Enhancements Project? And, uh, sixty percent of that vote was for the fifteen-foot sidewalks with parallel and diagonal parking with double lamp streetlights. So a survey summary. Uh, double, double lamp streetlight, virtual tie between smooth and fluted poles, and then the fifteen-foot sidewalks with parallel and diagonal parking. This was that rendering. Some feedback commentary. Uh, the general sentiment, uh, excitement to see the city follow through with the project, appreciative of the survey and the public meeting, uh, desires for increased and improved walkability, uh, need for improved accessibility for wheelchair use and stroller use, commentary regarding building facades and wanting them to be uniform, reflecting the aesthetic of, uh, the downtown area. Moving on to sidewalk and parking considerations. The striped parking spots on Main Street total one hundred and eighteen parking spots. These are the spots you can currently see on, are available to park in. The manual on uniform traffic control devices, which is the N U T C D, is a federally developed guidance document that sets the national standard. guidance document that sets the national standards for all traffic control devices, signage, signals, pavement markings, barriers, et cetera, installed on any street, road, highway, or bikeway open to public travel. The final parking and sidewalk configurations offered will be compliant with MUTCD standards to account for additional bump outs, street safety measures, parking distance from stop bars, crosswalks, et cetera. These configurations and designs will also address the major ADA conflicts that were identified in the downtown master plan, seen here on page forty-four. This is available on the website, uh, with the downtown master plan. Keeping strictly diagonal spots on both sides of Eleventh Street Block, these are the forty-two angled spots between Twelfth and Eleventh Streets, would not have allowed for improvements to be made on the streetscape or the sidewalk lengths. The city did not present the option of diagonal, diagonal, or no improvements as options to vote on in the survey, because improvements are necessary for accessibility accommodations and to increase the walkability of downtown. Diagonal spots could be placed on either side of Main Street with the parallel diagonal configuration. Staff recommends placing them on the north side where appropriate to accommodate traffic entering off of Seventh Highway. Regarding the quiet crossing at the railroad, planning for the quiet crossing can commence once the design elements have been decided. The railroad will be contacted and a cost estimate will be developed. And as a part of the project, eleven-street improvements, uh, will be designed in bid. The city currently does not have funding allocated for this, but may be able to incorporate it into the scope of work depending on bid pricing. This is an important element identified in the master plan to connect Main Street to Central Park. Considerations to think about when we're moving on to streetlights. Incorporating additional features will raise the overall cost of the pole and may affect timelines. Some features, like banner arms, can affect the engineering process and will need to be decided on earlier in the process. Fluted poles have a lead time of possibly six to eight months right now. The amount of lights will be determined via the site plan as well as a light study that Cochrane will conduct. So for next steps, staff recommends two separate motions that would authorize staff to move forward with a selection from the following streetscape options for conceptual engineering. One motion for streetlamp design, one motion for sidewalk width and parking configuration. From there, Cochrane Engineering will bring forward streetlight customization options for mayor and council to select from. The bid process will ask for a base model and then alternative models with options and pricing. This will include choices between smooth and fluted poles, decorative options, other customization features. Following decisions on the streetlights, parking and sidewalks, staff and Cochrane will move forward with the preliminary design plan and work to produce a timeline. And these are the motion options.
Excuse me, are there any questions for?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Erickson.
Uh, all of the renderings that have, uh, the cool new ones, the sketches and this, that, and the other, uh, where you have diagonal parking indicate that on the south side, and yet the recommendation that you stated, if I'd heard it correctly, was on the north side. So this kind of, you know, I'm kind of a visual guy. I've been looking at this and, and I thought, oh, that's, that's really cool the other way, and now it's opposite. So I guess I would, wouldn't mind seeing that reversed, or at least correct, because if that's what the public sees, I don't know what we voted on. I don't remember when you sent that out. Uh, this picture, I've, I've shown that to several people, and they like that one, the one that's up now, but I don't see it the other direction. And that also doesn't allow for, maybe this is too specific, but it doesn't allow for the ease of delivery on the north side, I don't believe. So I, I'm at a loss on, on that. I feel a little bit bamboozled, if you will.
Uh, staff was made aware that the parking configuration could be, I guess, altered. Um, we had, uh, we were operating under the assumption that this rendering meant that parking needed to be on the south side, uh, with the angled spots, uh, but we've now since been made aware that it really can be adjusted to have the angled spots where appropriate on either side of the street.
When you're in your presentation, you said north side. You didn't, I don't, that seemed rather concrete to me that the north side was what the staff recommended.
Where appropriate, yes.
Also tonight, councilmember, we're not necessarily voting tonight which side it's going to be on. Tonight, we're just voting on whether we want fifteen-foot sidewalks or nineteen-foot sidewalks. Part of the decision on where the parking is is going to depend on the engineering, and we just don't know that yet, so. So you, you don't have to worry about deciding whether it's north or south tonight, just whether you want parallel parking or hybrid parking.
I appreciate that, but it does make a difference to me on the, if the, if the parallel parking's not on the north side, then it makes a difference that I'd want a parallel parking on both sides, or a one-way street.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, any other discussions?
So my understanding is we'll vote on the diagonal and the parallel, whether it's on the north or south at a later time, is that correct?
Uh, Cochrane will provide us with an engineering plan that we will have to approve to move forward with the project, yes.
Okay, can we, at that, at this time, uh, suggest maybe a one, looking at a one-way rendition of that?
That would be a separate conversation, I think, from this project, but yeah, we could have that discussion.
All right.
Can I clarify that question then? If, if we're looking at a one-way configuration, then we would be looking at most likely diagonal, diagonal. And if we approve, if we do this, then we add something to, to it later that we've already approved in a different sense.
Why would we be talking diagonal, diagonal with a one-way street?
We would be, but if we go fifteen feet and nineteen feet.
You could put, you could put the diagonal and a parallel in it, no matter which side it is, the measurements are all going to be the same. Uh, I, I understand where the councilman's wanting to see the visual part of it, but it, basically, you got a certain amount of, uh, real estate to work with, and whether it's a diagonal on the south side or diagonal on the left, on the north side, uh, really doesn't change the measurements of a fifteen-foot parking, uh, fifteen-foot sidewalk, and, uh, all we, all we need to do is just do the, a diagonal and a parallel and go on with it.
Do I need to be, I'm just realizing now, limiting this presentation to questions to George, and then we have to session when we're on the actual resolution? I was just worried about us having discussion during the presentation time on the agenda. Any other questions for George, I guess is what I'm getting at.
George, I just want to thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's been a, it's been a, it's been a lot for you, and we appreciate everything you've done and everything else.
Well, I appreciate it, Councilmember Brummel. Uh, I did go out there and count the parking spots myself, uh, so those numbers are accurate. Uh, I've learned a lot, uh, about streetscape improvements just in general. Uh, I, I think that this is a really special project, and the city has a, an amazing opportunity to do something special here. Um, yeah, so, thank you.
Okay, any final party questions? Thank you, George, for your presentation. Now, idol nineteen then is a motion regarding streetlight design. This is just a motion to staff to direct them to achieve something. So as George has presented it as single lamp or double lamp, does anyone want to make a motion regarding streetlight design?
Are we doing motion four, one, or the other, or motion two? Okay, motion to approve the double lamp.
Okay, the motion for Councilmember Tholen to move forward with the double lamp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion about streetlight design? This is really a motion regarding double lamp.
This might be a Cochrane, uh, question, but with a double lamp compared to a signal, a, a single lamp, would that change the distance of the poles? Why is the distance, uh, how, uh, how far apart the poles are?
Yes, it would. We're going to look at the lighting level and design from there.
Dave, can you, can you go to a microphone? We're gonna, we're gonna lie to answer the question since you're in the room.
Yeah, we, it's not the same layout and design with the single and with the twin. So they're going to be different. There's going to be more singles than twins poles.
But it is also true that you can get the same amount of light out of a single head as you can with a, a double head?
Well, I mean, the lighting level, we can make the lighting level work both ways. There'll just be more lights with the singles. Right?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion about double lamp? Councilmember Brummel.
Yeah, this is for Main Street only, right? Because we talked about the, the streets coming off the side that we might go to a single lamp if possible, so this is just, we're talking just Main Street and doing double.
Yeah, the theory is the twins on Main Street and the singles on all your side streets would be the idea, just for hierarchy of your downtown.
Perfect. Any other questions? Discussion about the lamp before we vote. Okay, thank you, Dave, thanks for those questions. All right, if there's no other discussion, then I have a motion, a second, to direct staff to move forward with double lamp streetlight design. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Now we're on a motion regarding sidewalk width and parking configuration. As, uh, George has presented it, we have fifteen foot, which would be a, what we've deemed hybrid parking, a combination of parallel and diagonal, or nineteen feet would be parallel parking. This is the opportunity to direct staff to move forward with something. So it could be one of these, or, I guess if there's some other discussion, then I guess that we can do that, but we need a motion in some direction.
I motion approve the fifteen-feet combination of parallel and diagonal parking.
Okay, got a motion from Councilmember Tholen. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Now we are on discussion on sidewalk width and parking configuration. Councilmember Erickson.
I want to go back to the, the potential then of, uh, if we did a, a one-way, we could discard the fifteen feet, and I, I know what Councilmember Kayler is saying, but i- if we have a one-way street, we won't have as, as much street space, so we could literally bring the sidewalks out. And my question is, would we be held, if we decided to do one-way because of this, we'd have to, would we have to change it procedurally to say, okay, we'll take the most sidewalk we can get to get the correct, uh, one-way parking?
So what I'm hearing you saying is if we went one-way, there would be a single lane going through Main Street, and therefore you could do angled parking on both sides? Is that what you're, is that what you're?
Yes, but that, it seems to me in my mind, because I haven't seen a rendition of it, that we could in, in fact have wider sidewalks. I just don't want it to be held by, oh, wait, we voted on it for fifteen, uh, instead of the other way around.
I mean, what we're directing staff to do is to move forward with engineering, so, uh, I mean, there's never something that stops the council from taking another direction, but yes, that would add additional complication to change the intention moving forward after we vote tonight, I think, is, if I'm understanding correctly. So yes, we are making the decision tonight, I guess, to not do a one-way street if we move forward with something different than what you're suggesting.
Then, Your Honor, I would ask to amend, uh, to amend this, if that's at the, at this point, to give us a consideration for what a one-way street and that could, could be done, because I think that's something that twenty years from now, we may wish we did. It may, twenty years from now, we may wish that we didn't do it, but I would certainly like to see that consideration.
So I'm hearing that as, I don't, well, first of all, staff, do you have any concerns or, uh, comments on that suggestion?
Uh, yes, mayor and council, if I may. This is just in reference to the downtown master plan. The one-way street was not an option that was presented in this plan, and this plan was officially adopted, uh, and these were the options that were presented.
So I, Councilmember, I guess you could make a motion to amend the current motion, uh, to add a consideration for one-way streets, but as I think George is telling us, that we don't really have a, anything in the plan to reflect that, but that, that's your prerogative.
Aye, 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 aye. I, I would like to see it considered. It was discussed in the discussions of the master plan. Uh, the master plan was, was very well done, and we, we approved it and this, that, and the other. However, the addition to, to the city's property with the Fifteenth and Main property seems to have changed it a little bit in my mind. Uh, I, I just, I, I can, I can certainly live with, because I know the people, people would, would be happy with reconstruction of this, but I, I would hate to not at least consider the one-way ability to do that, uh, coming from the, uh, east to the west.
Okay. Am I hearing that? A motion to amend Councilmember Tholen's motion?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second on Councilmember Erickson's motion to add a consideration for one-way?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Kayler? Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilmember Kayler?
I know, I know it's, it wasn't brought up, and I think it should have been brought up, just to have a, an alternative plan, but like, with having Fifteenth and Main property, uh, now in our possession and other things to consider, uh, I would, at least, I would appreciate and entertain the idea that at least we can see a redish, and, uh, a drawing of it. And who knows, that might even change your, the aspect of it, just not being able to, to like it, but I think seeing a drawing of it, uh, going to like it.
Okay, any other discussion? I guess, uh, I would ask, I guess from both of you, because I'm hearing you mention Fifteenth and Main. My concern with making it one-way essentially makes Main Street un-travable. So like, we've talked about shutting down Main Street. Uh, this means you can't travel from Fifteenth Street to Seventh Highway on Main. So what is the Fifteenth and, what does the church property change in your estimation on this? How does that affect the design?
I think that's probably a different discussion. Uh, we didn't, when we did the master plan, we didn't have all the facets of what's, was going on, and I don't know what the master plan folks would have said. Uh, here again, I'm not here to be the engineer. I, I have a vision in my mind, and I have a vision of where we could circle and loop around. Do we, do we need to go both directions on Main Street? I don't know. I'm not a professional to do that. I don't think anybody on the council, at least how, well, I know them, has that planning expertise, other than discussions with other people and the feelings that we all have. Councilmember Kayler, I think, said it pretty well in a, in a short blip at the end of his discussion, was that maybe we bring it back just to see that we don't want it, but not considering it, to me, uh, would seem to be an error.
Okay. Any further discussion on Councilmember Erickson's motion?
What is the timeframe of this presentation moving forward? Like, what does that look like? Like, how long is that going to take? What's the delay? We've got to get lamps ordered, we've got to...
So what we need to do is get started on the design, and we have not started yet because I don't know the cross-section for what we're doing. It's great you guys are deciding the streetlights, that helps a lot, that's good, but we can't do any, I mean, we've surveyed it, we've studied it, we've laid it out with these different cross-sections, but we haven't done anything, so, you know, the idea was, was to construct this next year. Oh, let's think now. I mean, the original idea was to construct it and, and conflict with the World Cup, but the rate we're going, I don't know if that's going to be a problem anymore, so, um, you know, there's no sense in, the one-way idea, I mean, that's just, that's just a, I don't know what that is, that's a planning deal to see where the, where the traffic's all going to go, and you're going to see where the traffic's going to go somewhere, you know, to get around. I mean, that's all we're going to learn there, and it's going to create issues. Um, okay, so that's, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to, how to help you guys with the one-way situation. Like George said, the master plan kind of already baked, I thought the master plan baked that through, and it's, you know, parallel, angle, you know, what do you want to do? Doing a one-way, you know, that's a study kind of thing, just to see, I mean, we know traffic's going to go somewhere, and how's that going to affect other roads, and how they're going to get out. And I don't know what's your...
Councilmember Tholen was asking, uh, if we were to, to approve this tonight, what would a timeframe look like in order to even have anything to show us? And I guess that would be another staff question, too, because we, we don't even know, we, we'd ask you to do that, so.
Right, right. Yeah, I was hoping to get an answer tonight so we could come back with the answer to your question, because there is issues with the, where you put the angle and the parallel depending upon the entrances. There's a lot of issues that we need to look at and talk about. So we'd stop and not do that and, and figure out this one-way question and wait till we decide if we're going to go one-way.
So we, we would essentially be tabling this discussion until we were to resolve this.
Decide the one-way deal, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Did that give you some answer? Councilmember Kayler, you have a question?
Uh, yes, it, even suggesting the one-way, you're going to have the same amount of landscape on or footprint, whether it's, whether it's... landscape on or footprint, whether it's, whether it's a two-lane or a two-way or one-lane. You're still dealing with a certain amount of footage from point A to point, a curb to curb. Still would be the same, is that correct?
No, because what you're asking, the reason you want to go one-way is because you want to have more sidewalk. Right now, okay, so right now, if you did, the widest right-of-way we have is eighty feet, okay? Fifteen fifteens to sidewalks, we have fifty feet from curb to curb right now. That would be the cross-section if you guys went with the fifteen-foot. If you go one-way, you know, it's, it's one-way now, you, we decide what, how wide we want to make the road. You know, so now you can make a wider sidewalk there. That's why you do the one-way, right? That's the reason for it. Or would you have two lanes going one-way? You'd have one lane going one-way, I guess.
I think councilmembers' thought is to have angled parking with a one-way traffic wave going through there. I don't know if that's east or west or west or east, but that's kind of what you're asking for, right?
I'm asking for what they think would be the best to consider, consideration of what one-way would do. Yes, that would be generally what I'd be asking for. Otherwise, I would be asking for the, the way the graphic shows. But I, I just, I, I believe that we should consider it. I've talked to several people about it and some people say, you're crazy, Galen, don't even talk about it. And to be fair, in the master plan conversations, I forget the gentleman's name, but the one of the two head people that were talking about it actually said they would love to see the street closed. I'm not saying that. Don't get me wrong. But that, there were discussions on the one-way. They just weren't presented in the, in the master plan. That's all I'm asking for. I don't, I'm not hearing an answer on how long would, could you, could you come up and say, this is where the traffic would have to go? It's a great idea or it's a dumb idea? Would that take two weeks or two years or two days?
Would take two years. Would take longer than two weeks and not two years. So I, I'd have to think about it. I don't know. We could come, what is it, July right now? We could come back in August and do it again, give you a present, you know, try to figure it out.
Can't make, can't make that promise. I don't know what the timeline on traffic study is going to look like.
Yeah, I don't know, I...
Okay, we have, any other discussion on councilmember Erickson's motion?
Chief, I'm going to put you on the spot from a safety standpoint. Does, does a one-way street do anything on Main Street?
Well, again, I'm not an engineer and I don't pretend to be one, but when I think of one-way, let's say you take the loading from Seven Highway, you're running everybody east or west on Main Street. To get back, to go anywhere, you would have to use Walnut because you, you can't turn right. Your next street would be B Street or something like that. And I'm not sure you want all that traffic going on B Street trying to find its way back. If, if there was another through street exactly like Walnut, a block away from downtown on the north side, I think it would make more sense to, to me. Now, I'm not saying you're crazy for thinking one-way street is an option, but to me, it's, it's not as feasible as having two, two lanes of travel east and west for the way our downtown is, is laid out. But again, I'm not an engineer. I'm just thinking, if I make a right turn on Fifteenth, how do I get back to City Hall? If, if I'm not from here, do I know that? And it's not, you got to cross railroad tracks and it's, it's not easy to navigate.
Your Honor.
Hold on, that'd be another clarifying question. You are talking about one-way all the way from Seven Highway to Fifteenth Street. Is that correct?
No, I, no, if I want to be, if I want to be specific, I would say from Tenth Street to Fourteenth Street. That would be my conception, Tenth Street to Fourteenth Street, which would eliminate the Fifteenth Street issue. It would just be from Tenth to Fourteenth. I'd even, I'd even thought about just Twelfth to Eleventh or Eleventh to Twelfth. But that would be what I would ask. But that's where I would do, like the chief says, I'm not an engineer. I just thinking about it and I'd like to know whether it's feasible, whether it's a good idea or whether it's a crazy idea.
Okay, any other discussion on councilmember Erickson's motion? Okay, this is just voting on the motion only. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Alright, we're going to roll call that. I didn't hear enough to make a judgment, so.
Do you want me to be louder?
Your Honor, to clarify, we are...
We are just voting on the motion to add a consideration of one-way streets.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowan?
No.
Kayler?
Aye.
Tholen?
No.
Brummel?
No.
Erickson?
Yes.
Mayor Levisay?
No. Okay, so now we go to the original motion, which is councilmember Tholen's motion to have fifteen-foot sidewalk, parallel or hybrid parking. Any further discussion on councilmember Tholen's motion for fifteen-foot with a combination parking?
I just want to clarify that we're not picking north or south. What would be parallel and diagonal and that'd be after they come back with it, correct?
That will somewhat depend on the engineering discussion, yes. Councilmember Erickson.
What's the, is this from Eleventh to Twelfth only?
This is Seven Highway to Fifteenth.
Seven Highway to Fifteenth, okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and just roll call it from the beginning.
Councilmember Kayler?
No.
Tholen?
Aye.
Brummel?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Edmund, oh, Edmund's over here. Rowan?
Aye.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're in the visitor's section. I don't have any visitor appearance forms. We'll go with councilmember comments. Everybody have a good Fourth of July? Everybody still has all your fingers? Saw several of you at the Red, White, and Blue Springs event. Any comments from councilmembers?
I just wanted to say, thank Parks and Rec for their Red, White, and Blue Springs. It was a great event. It was great to see everybody out there and a great fireworks display and definitely looking forward to next year on the, what'd you call it again?
Oh, man, the semi-Quinn Centennial.
There you go.
There you go.
Should be a big event next month.
I had to Google it. Can you spell that? I, no. I say I can try.
Common spelling?
Next year will be a big two-hundred-and-fifty year, so we already have some discussion of some big things planned, so it'll be exciting.
Your Honor.
Yeah, councilmember Erickson.
Since Nick, councilmember Brummel complimented the park staff, I would like to also say the first annual, second annual cardboard boat race was cool and I bring that up because his kids beat my grandkids.
She did take third.
Well, since we're complimenting park staff, I was going to wait till I got to July eighteenth. But I have a resolution and I think, Mayor, you're the only park staff representative here tonight. Okay, this is you then, so I won't read this directly to you, but...
Just turn a little bit red. Should we have to come on up?
Yeah, we should. Have you a picture and you have a speech prepared? Well, before the next council meeting, July eighteenth will have occurred, which is actually National Recreation Park Association Day. And so I have a resolution to recognize that day. I believe it's also Parks and Recreation Month of the month of July. Is that right as well? I don't think that's in the resolution, but they used to just get a day, now they get a whole month. But we want to recognize all of their hard work and as councilmember Brummel mentioned, the Red, White, and Blue Springs event is, highlights that. But the proclamation says, whereas the National Recreation and Park Association has designated July eighteenth as Park and Recreation Professionals Day, this year marks the fortieth anniversary of Park and Recreational Month that is celebrated with the theme Build Together and Play Together. Whereas the Park and Recreation Professionals Day recognizes the importance and benefits, benefits of services that enrich the lives of Blue Springs citizens. And whereas Blue Springs Park and Recreation Department continues to make improvements to our parks and facilities, May twenty-twenty-five had a lot of exciting things. I'm going to skip over all of those. And whereas the skilled work of our Parks and Recreation Professionals strengthen community cohesion and resiliency, connects people with nature and each other, and provides and promotes opportunities for healthful living. Now therefore, Chris Levisay, Mayor of Blue Springs and the Blue Springs City Council do hereby proclaim July eighteenth Park and Recreation Professionals Day. Give all of our park staff a round of applause. Mayor, as a singular representative here tonight, I will give this proclamation to you. You can share it with the team. Please communicate our appreciation for all their hard work. They do a lot and often goes underappreciated, so we want to let them know how much, at least this body appreciates them. Also, between now and the next meeting, we have our, I think it's our first movie in the park on July eleventh. It's Despicable Me Four, so great movie. Also, our Music in the Park series continues on Sundays. That's all I've got. Am I missing anything? Councilmember Kayler?
I'd like to piggyback on the parks, on the red, white, and blue, to also include the police department and our volunteers and police services for outstanding job of getting people in and out of the park and helping us get back on the road. And I, I just want to say we appreciate them just doing a good job.
It was definitely warm out there for them.
It was a warm night. Yes, I, I nothing but compliments about the event, the opportunities there for families to participate. It was very well done and everyone enjoyed it, so. Firework show was great too and they all blew up where they're supposed to, so. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? We are adjourned.